I'll have the recording of the last meeting. We're okay. Now, I'm going to go ahead and join this one. There we go. The, when we talk about the meeting, each of them serves a different purpose and whether or not we have another one after May 15, it's really gonna depend on what happens during the budget meeting. For those of you that were here last year, you know, we went up until the end of June to adopt this. Um, which we have to be adopted by the city. Or, the city shuts down, I get to go home because we can't spend any money. So, no employees, no nothing. So, as we're going through this process, please keep that in mind if people want to change things, bring up new projects or stuff like that. Hopefully, when you knew you were gonna be on the committee, you've been given some thought to maybe some things that you particularly want to make sure get covered. Um, I'm gonna bring up, so that was the first thing. So, this loss of your Oregon government terms, those of you who've been doing this for a little bit are pretty much familiar with a lot of these. You know, you've heard of before. Um, but for those of you that are fairly new, um, or there might be some terms from here that you might not have heard before, or this might give you some clarity about what those really mean. I know my computer. Does she need a copy of that I have on here?
No, we were talking about the term that somebody self.
Yeah, it normally means that, I thought maybe it meant this, it could be Roberts, it could not be, it's hard to tell sometimes. But, okay, so I'm gonna bring up my presentation and then we'll get started. I really don't think this will last over a long time, but it just depends on how much discussion. And, just like I said, just a gentle reminder, we can focus, we can talk about the budget. In fact, I did, I gave you all a copy of the budget. You can talk about it, but just talk about it in general terms and you can ask questions about it. To more clarification of things, I am gonna try to review some of the aspects of it so that when it comes to the first budget meeting, last one. Yay! Yeah, we're good, we're moving along now. Oh, okay, budget one of them, that's kind of what I'm doing here. For those, I'm hoping there's some new stuff for you, otherwise I don't want you to feel like you wasted your time here. So, but, uh, maybe what I really just wanna kind of get a handle on is explaining the pieces of the budget and how things work together, how things fit together and what it should do, shouldn't do. What a budget does, what a budget shouldn't do, that sort of thing. Um, the other thing before I get started on that is everybody got a budget request form that was sent out. This is not, it was sent out in a packet, so it was at the very last page. I don't, I don't expect you all to use it. In fact, I expect most of you won't. I know of a few people who will and it's designed because the last thing I want is on May, at least, what is it? May 15 to all of a sudden we have to deal with a bunch of projects and trying to do the legwork. And, it's a lot of work, took me a lot of time last year to do this legwork. And, that's what I'm hoping that we can also, I, I want this also to frame the decisions that the budget committee makes as well. We all have pet projects, we all have things we want to get done. What is our primary role as a budget committee? What do you think our primary role as a budget committee is? So, guys, give me a headache. Just kidding.
To make sure the city has at least as much come in as we have going out?
No.
Nope?
Nope. Okay, so, uh, revenue reform, we talked about that, it's been coming to council meetings. Sure, you gotta have revenue coming in, you gotta have enough to cover everything, but that's not the main purpose. The main purpose is, we gotta take care of the city and we have to take care of water, wastewater, streets. We have to do a bunch of things, we have to do the necessary things, to keep the water flowing and to keep the toilets flush. All the things that we do, there is the ancillary stuff. You know, the things that we do that are, I would call fun, or, you know, do things like, you know, manage the parks and recreation building and stuff like that. We have to have money to cover those things, so maybe we need more revenue, but that is usually a council decision. So, that's really not gonna be something you guys focus on. You're gonna be focused on how well the city spends the money that we have. Meaning, is, when I present this budget to you, is this making sense to you? Is there the right amount of money going into the right pots? Do you think, for example, last year there was a lot of debate on the sheriff and how much the sheriff would be, whether the city wants to fund it. Um, you guys can make all the recommendations in the world, but you know at the end, how you approve the budget and the council makes the adoption. I'm gonna present numbers from you and these are based on things, these are the things that I have to, we have to spend. You know, we have contracted services, payroll, you know, things like that. And then there's, we're gonna have a brand new shiny April 10th meeting, 17th meeting. You will get to see our first ever CIP for the city. And, I got it presented to me last, last Friday by a city engineer and it's beautiful. So, the CIP is going to tell us how we spend our capital budget. What, how we do the big projects like Collins, how we do the big projects like Bay. You know, if we don't make space, we don't get grants, you know, we're always trying to get grants, but how do we do these projects? How do we keep things going? That's the job, and your job is to make sure that my balance, my budget percentage is balanced and that I'm not overspending, like I'm trying to do, build a cop stadium or something like that. You know, that's a big exaggeration, but you wanna look at those stuff as well. My job is, what I'm gonna try to focus on is keeping the city money, that's my job. Keeping, and then to fix the things we can with the money that we have. So, uh, that doesn't always mean I can think about the fancy stuff, like, we're gonna talk about, um, traffic deterrence and what that looks like. And I want you to ask questions about that, okay? So, if you receive this budget and you don't see something out there that you really think should be there, talk to me about it. I'm also gonna ask you guys, don't wait till the meeting, hit me up, okay? Please, if you have questions, say in your list. Bill did that last year for me.
So, can I just make a quick comment? I think one of the important things about budget that, um, we struggled with last year was the money coming in and the money going out and having the correct buckets where everything lives. And so, um, you know, we have our, our primary source of revenues, our transient lodging tax, but we have a huge amount of money that comes in, water and sewer. And I think part of our responsibility is to make sure that we're handling all of that money the way that the ordinance tells us that we need to, or the city's constitution. And so, um, making sure that we know that all of the water and sewer money revenues are being used for water and sewer. And all of our transient lodging money is being used per the rules that have been written over the years as to how that, that money needs to be used. And so, I think that's a really important thing that we as a budget committee need to think about, um, when we see the numbers. And I think the other thing that's important is, um, that last year, the council said, um, related to accounts payable, that, um, if there are specific projects that the council does not want to have to deal with for an approval, that they need to call them out in the budget by the specific project. So, for example, the payment of the sheriff and it's a $450,000 or whatever, the budget needs to specifically call out that we're authorizing $450,000 for the sheriff's contract or we're authorizing $50,000 or $80,000, whatever the purchasing limits are for, um, a new piece of equipment.
Sure.
And so, I think it's important that when we get the budget, that we've got those things called out so that we can approve the budget so that we don't have to go to the council and say, "We need to have your approval for this" or, or the budget is already, you know, we've already defined what that is and the budget is gonna tell us.
And when we get to talking about the format of the budget, I'll go over that because I'm, I'm doing this very specific way to have this kind of talk that shows, these are the proportions, the line items, if you will. And then underneath that, you will see what I'm gonna show you, which is a different color. Those are the specific things that fall in that frame. So, this is when he's talking about calling out the projects that we're gonna do. Because if we say we're going to do the Collins water line replacement, let's just use that one. And we say we know we're gonna spend $350,000 on it, okay? Then, when we do things within that, it would be following the procurement guys, so talking about following the purchasing goals. So, if a project is specifically called out, I can authorize expenditures up to like that $100,000. That's the new thresholds, that's the ORS. But, once it gets to $100,000, it doesn't matter whether the project is in the budget, it has to go to the council. So, what they're saying is that the small stuff, like the $10,000 a year, the $20,000 a year, as long as that full amount has been contemplated in the budget, it doesn't have to go to the council. And that just saves time, it saves us time in order to process it. And that's why it's gonna be very important for, like, and he says, call out the projects and make sure we know what we're spending on. And, you know, and that, CIP will help with that, because that tends to be more of the, um, the bigger stuff. Although, you will see when I make the budget and when we look at the, the copy I gave you, that I called out some little stuff too. It's just a way of transparency, I need you guys to know what the city is spending money on because everybody's like, ah, can't we get all this money coming in? One thing I didn't include on here and I, I am gonna put together a little thing called property taxes, one on one.
Good.
How it applies to Dico Bay, because as you know, y'all, we, if you live in Dico Bay, we pay property taxes. Guess how much the city gets?
Right. Unless it's urban renewal.
Exactly, but a lot of people don't realize that, they're like, well, I pay property taxes. Yes, you do!
I'm so tired of that.
But, we don't get it, or we only get a small portion of it. So, but that's something important that I think people need to realize, since when we start talking about what our biggest bucket is and we'll talk about that. Bill knows what our biggest bucket is, biggest bucket is. So, where all our money comes in that we get to use, okay? But, water and sewer, we don't get to use this for water and sewer.
Marijuana tax.
Yeah, that's.
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Oh, that's going to the, the programs that the state has now.
Yeah, that's what I thought I'd been reading, but I wasn't, I haven't, I haven't gotten into it too deep, but I think I need to, let the council know that, yeah.
Very little money is coming into the cities in my work.
Yeah, it's only about $40,000 maybe per year, but, but we know it's now, so, okay.
You have a question I mentioned more, the, the presentations that are for, that were for all of the charitable organizations, are those gonna be scheduled here or are those council?
Those are gonna come on the May, April 17th. We'll talk about that when we get here.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Yeah, so, all right, let's go to, so, the purpose of the objectives of the budget, so why do we need one? Well, it's a financial accountability tool. Believe me, I follow our budget to the level of what we were told we could spend. In fact, ask the guys, they will tell you, I'm on their butts constantly about their spending. In fact, I'm gonna have to have another conversation with them because our wastewater is looking not so good. It's been a lot of expenses in there. It's also a communications tool. That's what people think it is, I think it does because it talks about the physical health of the city. And, our, the health of our city is good, we have revenue, we have money. We're not in any kind of urgent trouble, we're not in a red anywhere. I know we don't have a bond, but that doesn't mean we don't have money, okay? The city is not at risk of anything. Can't apply for federal loans, we don't want to anyway, uh, because there may not be any left, you know? Um, and then, it, you know, it would be wise if you wanted to go off our bond, it would make it more, definitely more challenging or that. But, we don't really wanna do that either, so, overall, the city is doing very well. Um, it's a reflection of policy, the, the, this is supposed to be, the budget is supposed to be reflective of what's important to the council, what's in the strategic plan, that's how it's supposed to be reflected. So, when I'm looking at how I'm doing things, I should be looking at what the council strategic plan is against how we budget. Count, I will be honest, the council strategic plan is in serious need of a day. So, um, I'm not gonna be able to do that to the extent that we, some things that we focus on, like safety and stuff like that, we can, we can address. But, that's how the budget system's supposed to work. Budget is a plan, it's a plan for how we get things done in the city. As far as the spending part, the doing part is something else we can do. The biggest thing is it defines our spending authority. So, like I said, if we don't get approved by July 1st, the city closes because we're not spending money because we don't have any jobs, we don't have a budget.
July 1st is.
July 1st, yeah, yeah. Based, it, based on estimates.
We don't get to do continuing resolutions.
You what?
We don't get to do continuing resolutions.
No, there is no continuing resolution of the budget. There is no, it's not like the federal government, there's no extension. So, we don't pass a budget, we don't spend money. I have not, since I've been doing this for eight years, I have not heard of the city not passing their budget. Most of us get really close, but I'm not heard of it because of the, the risk that moves over our heads. Um, it's also control, it restricts the spending to an authorized limit. This is where he's talking about the appropriations, it restricts the spending. Sure, we can sometimes figure out ways around, we can, you know, move, you know, with, as long as we're working within the certain, working within the certain, like, we can, what do they call objectives? Like personnel, materials and supplies, we'll talk about that. So, there's some wiggle room in there, but we gotta stay within our spending authority appropriations. So, once that budget is adopted, that's my roadmap for what I can spend, I can't spend. And it demonstrates, oh, prevents unplanning planned spending of reserves. Okay, so, reserves, you don't wanna touch those. When you start filling out reserves, those are used for capitals of big things, those are used our rainy day fund. And we should probably be looking at pretty more, so I would be looking at pretty more in our rainy day fund. Because we got some big capital budgets coming up, especially when we talk about the water treatment plant needing to be replaced. And that's right now, $4.5 million and that's, by the time we're likely to do it, probably like the Harvard's probably, so $5 million. So, these are just things that I have to talk about. What should guide the budget, the overall direction of the city, the strategic plan, our municipal responsibilities to take care of the streets, take care of water, take care of the sewer, our financial obligations, they're talking about if we have, um, loans or debt services and we just have that one. And then our risk and stability posture. There's a lot of cities right now that are actually scrambling for money, they're going to be, they're gonna have a deficit. They are cutting services. We don't have to do that. So, that's how I, that's why I say the city is in good financial health. We're not at risk of going into the deficit and having to cut services or programs. Um, what are our budget objectives? Uh, these are to establish our budget, you see, that's the general objectives. So, that's, a lot of it's the same thing, estimate revenues, obtain input for public, I think this is a duplicate and I should not have kept this one, so just ignore that. These are all the people that should be involved in the budgeting process. Um, this is my staff who tell me what they want to, for their programs. Um, me, I'm the budget officer, you guys, this is, you're a part of it, the governing body, the council, the citizens. I hope you can encourage people to come and to attend and to review, have their say, you know? It's supposed to be a part of their process as well. We get the county assessor involved and the tax preparator because we do, we do have to, um, with the urban renewal, we do assess the tax, Department of Revenue for all the fines, Department of Administrative Services, and of course, the secretary of state for the audits, so. So, it's a, it's a lot of people touch this, oops. What's your role? Discuss and when the majority feels necessary, advise or propose budget. When I give you a budget, I'm gonna give you my best guess. That's what it, you know, it's my best guess estimate based on how things are tracking, what our CPI would look like, you know, things like that. That's going to be how I propose an estimate. The guys, when I asked them for their wants, they did the legwork, a lot of the legwork and they got me their estimates. So, these are things that they tried, so it's gonna be our best guess, but it's not gonna be perfect. So, if you disagree and you feel like something should be more, we can revise it. If you think it should be less, we can revise it. But, I would wanna explain and, and, you know, say, well, it can't be less, so maybe we can look at it just a different way. But, ultimately, everybody would have to agree. So, let's say that, um, council Watson wants to, to reduce something, she doesn't think it's right. The rest of you disagree, then I don't reduce it. It's whatever the group as a whole agrees, so. Um, you may reduce or increase the estimate resource, as I said, that, um, approve the proposed budget with all funds in balance. I'm gonna present you a balanced budget. So, we changed things, we're gonna have to move, you know, figure that out there. But, when you're ready, you'll be saying, yes, I reapproved this budget, ready to run. So, keep in mind that the budget committee does not set staffing levels, salaries, benefits or contract terms. So, when I say I'm entering into a contract with somebody for a particular service that's within my scope of authority, I don't, I don't have to present it and you guys don't have to, or shouldn't, tell me, well, I think you need to ask for this, you know? That's not your role. Establish or eliminate specific programs or services. Uh, what I put in here is because we have this discussion, I think that, I think I'm comfortable enough that if you guys have an idea, somebody has an idea and wants to come with an idea proposed for somebody, you can discuss about it. I'm not even gonna shut it down and say, oh, you're not allowed to create a program. Because I just think there's rooms for discussion and I can't possibly examine everything. And then make policy. Even if you are a counselor on this committee, you're not a counselor here. You're a budget committee member, which means you get to set the policy later. Here, you're just to talk about the budget and the financial expenses. If we need to set policy later on something, we can say that, we need to bring to the policy and I can bring that to the council.
So, just to clarify this line item then, um, the staffing levels, salaries, benefits and contract terms have already been decided by the council and so you're just presenting them to this committee for approval of what's already there?
We are going based on the approved, for example, the member of the salary.
The compliance, yeah.
The member of that was approved, we're going by the salary compensation. And I will tell you what the CPI is tracking and this is what will be, and then we'll look at, I look at what steps are. So, like, say, Carla's ready to, she's popped out, but let's say she was ready to move on to the next step. That graph I'm giving you would include her step as well.
So, we're not going to hear any new programs or services or anything that are being proposed?
Not that I'm aware of at this point.
Okay.
I have no current premises.
But if, if there were any, this committee would not be with us.
No, what I'm saying is you can't propose one.
Oh, they're coming from, yeah, they're being pushed down to us from council.
But, but if you need, if there's something you wanna do and it's not something I've already contemplated and that's part of it, that's what that's for, right? So, in that case, and I asked for, I don't, did I take the form to say April 10?
The letter.
Letter. So, that's so that I can put it in there and we can discuss. Or, I can argue with you and say, well, I can't go into budget. You know, I will have discussions with people and we'll explain why. Not, no, you can't do it, but it'd be part of that, and then it'll come to you guys. But if you're sitting there, what I'm saying is I want you to feel like you can propose something, but actually, most budget committees don't. Does that make sense? This is what they're saying, don't do, but I'm okay if people wanna propose something.
Salaries, that's a lot.
Not salaries.
Well, I'm just, I mean, you're telling us we can't do that, you gave us a form that says we could.
Right, but then I could, questions or concerns may influence the future decisions, but not specifically out of any way. But, I, like I said, the reason for that form is less about a lot of you than about more of others. So, that's to, um, help me out, figure where people wanna go. But if you have an idea, I wanna hear it. Like I said, I can't think of everything, maybe there's something that should be done or that should be bad. It's not, not really gonna be a program or service, it's more gonna be a project. Does that make sense? It's really more about being a project than a program or service. I can't offhand think of any kind of particular program that we could say, oh, we can start doing. If it comes to me, I'll think of it, I'll pop it out there. Um, obtain information, you can request any information you want or need, wish, would like to see. You can tour the operations if you want to, you can apply about the budget, I can request information, we got additional information. And you can ask for any of mine, staff, with that. So, you're just gonna be me and Ray, which will be attending, Paul may attend. But if you wanna hear from anybody else, just let me know in advance and I'm happy to have them attend. It's your, it's your authority to do that. So, here's how I need to be a good member, to the extent that you can, attend all meetings, especially these two. But, especially the second one. Um, thoroughly read the proposed budget, my budget message and any supporting documents. So, please make the time to guide, read and digest, if you wanna meet with me, I'm happy to do that. Uh, familiarize yourself with Oregon locals budgeting laws, we'll talk a little bit about that. Um, ask questions for information and clarifying concerns, represent the community and not special interests. There are definitely some special interests that affect the community. For example, if we want to, um, what, when I say we wanna, spit on, when I say we wanna create a new community center up here, okay? That may be a project I wanna do, but it may be something that would be of a real benefit to the community because it could be something that we can do senior classes in or something like that. So, it's that type of thing, it's just make, you know, ask the question, will, is this a good thing for the community? Um, and like I said, ask questions of the budget officer. I'm asking you to send me your list, send me your questions, give me three days before the April 17th meeting. Um, if you have any questions, you will have the draft, I'm really gonna try to get to the draft. Uh, let's see, April 17th. I'm gonna try to get to you in well enough time. I'm, I'm almost done, was it, we didn't watch? Where's April 17th? So, I'm gonna try and get to you, I may not have every piece, but I'm gonna have the majority of the pieces to you by next Friday. So, you'll have a good start at it. There may be some gaps or maybe some holes, they'll be filled in by the April 17th then. But, at least by Friday, you will have a rough year.
So, a quick question as far as this training, um, like, you said, one, much of our revenue is restricted in terms of how we use it. Does that go for urban renewal as well and that? And where, where do we get, just a sheet, a sheet, sheet of where we get money from and what the restriction of.
Uh, for urban renewal?
For any, all the, all the.
We'll talk a little bit about it here, but I am working on something like that for when I get the budget presentation.
So, we'll know what our limits are based on the source?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, so let's talk briefly about Oregon budget law. So, the thing, mainly is, I didn't wanna go into a lot of details because I, I'm hoping you're trusting me that I'm gonna keep us not running foul of the law, which is pretty easy as long as we have meetings. So, why do we have the local budget law? It's designed to establish standard procedures for preparing, presenting and administering the budget. So, all the governments are except, talking the same thing. They may be talking a bit different, but we're all using basically the same form. Encourage citizen enrollment, it's supposed to because we have to be transparent, bring citizens in, but, you know, we, not sure how to do that short of letting people know that we have these meetings, so.
Preparing the carpet type of bill, I can do that.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, provides a method of estimating revenues, expenditures and proposed taxes. So, again, communication, it's control and again, oh, that's in there twice. Ah, I took up this, I stole this from somebody else's slide and obviously I can do it good. The thing about budget, we do this for transparency and for you guys to keep me out of trouble. So, why do you have to follow budget law? The biggest thing is that people, if we spend more than we should, overall, for any particular category, we could be held liable for it, our city council could be held liable for it. So, that's why it's very important that we stay strictly within the funds we're allowed to spend. Phases, so there's three phases that, there's actually four, but the three that you're work, could more concerned about at this point is, I'm gonna propose the budget, you guys are gonna approve the budget, then goes to the city council, who adopts the budget and then if there's any changes, we're gonna do a supplemental. We are, I am going to put forward a small supplemental to the 24, 25 budget, um, because of some grants that came. So, it's good reasons, you know, when we don't say, when we don't say we're gonna get this grant, we don't put in our budget that we, we anticipate getting a grant, when we get it, we usually have to supplement because it's often more than the 10% you're allowed to do. So, that's the three main phases. And this is the, what the budget, from my eyes, this is what the budget process looks like. This, you don't have to, unless you're changing budget officers and the council's not, we don't have to change this. I have to publish, you guys meet, you know, talk a public hearing, we talk about shared revenue. It's a long process and you can see, the whole thing is supposed to be done by July 15th. Not the adopting of the budget by me getting it. Not the adopting of the budget by me getting it to off to the powers that be, that the cities adopted the budget till we knew we can spend money. It's a long process, it takes some time. So here's what ours looks like. So, April seventeenth, a budget committee meeting and urban renewal budget committee meeting will happen at the same time, the URA will vote first. Um, so this thing, this public hearing on proposed use of state revenue sharing funds, that does not apply to the URA, that is only for general fund. And that is saying that we are authorized to receive liquor, cigarette, marijuana, uh, and just general share revenue. That says, we have these services and we do this, it's a small public hearing. I don't know if anybody has ever come to talk about what we do it for, but we use it to put on our services, and so you use it for the reasons that we're supposed to have, but we'll have a public hearing on that. This is when the community support folks will come and give their presentations. And so far, I have Neighbors for Kids, um, Meal, Meals on Wheels, which is through the Capitol Governments, and, um.
Food Bank.
Food Bank. I don't remember, yeah, Friends of Otter Rock. That one, thank you. I did hear from Fleet of Flowers, they're supposed to send me something, um, I had given it by the twenty-first, but, uh, I, I will check with Kathy unless you have a contact with Donna. But, uh.
What do you mean?
Food Bank.
Food Bank, yeah, I see.
Yeah, because my new deadline, and this is a hard one, is she has to get it into me by the March twenty-eighth. I mean, if the council and budget committee still wishes to hear, huh?
March twenty-one.
Not March twenty-eighth, the thirty-first. Then Monday, Monday, end of the day Monday.
So, and those presentations need to have all the pieces, which includes the.
Yes, they're supposed to already have provided that to us, so. But Donna did this last year, so she can do it.
Yeah, there was a bit of a hiccup last year.
I, I, I know Kathy after last year. So those won't happen now, unless somebody tells me they can't make it that night, in which case we'll have it scheduled for the following, on the seventeenth. And then, I'm gonna show you the capital improvement program plan. You don't have to adopt it, you're, that's not your role, I just want you to see it. And I want you to see where it's coming from, and it's kinda nice, so I see from a perspective. The council will adopt it, um, that would be their role. And then, um, this will be the presentat- presentation of potential budget items by individuals. So, source of this reform, I want everybody to hear from them.
Is the CIP going to be pushing dollars into the budget request?
Yes.
So, the council will have approved the CIP?
No, not until after the budget, no, no. No, the council won't approve the CIP until budget time, you guys get, it's.
So the capital improvement, um, the recommendations on the CIP that are coming into the budget committee have not been approved by the council yet, so.
They're all in the master plans. So what they are, so what the CIP, when our city engineer did, was he took all of the projects from a water, sewer, storm, he didn't take parts, water, sewer, storm, transportation, put it all in a CIP and updated the dollars. We're gonna talk about which ones actually get funded, we wanna try to find. We're not gonna be able to find them all this year, in fact, it's gonna be a five to ten year plan. So.
I guess my question is, doesn't the council have to approve the CIP before the budget?
They are going to see it, but they don't have to adopt it. They can make changes and stuff like that, but the official adoption of it will be usually done about the same time as the, um, budget is.
Remind me again when we see the CIP?
I was hoping you'll let me share a draft of it on April first.
Okay. The April first. So that would be April first?
Yeah. You know, he gave me drafts of it, and he's making some changes to it based on some of the things that Brady and I told him.
I'm really excited to see it.
Because he, he's got some projects that were in last year planned that are like, well, we need to do this soon. And I'm like, no, no, we still need to be done now, so.
So I guess my question about the whole thing is, is that, you said it's a ten-year plan, so doesn't the council need to tell the budget committee that we're wanting to do this project, this project, this project, and this project out of the CIP in this year's budget? Don't we have to have that direction from the council to be able to decide what to put in and not put in the budget?
Well, I'm gonna put everything in that we want zero to five, that needs to be done now, the big name one is Williams. But a lot of things aren't gonna happen, because we just don't have the money for it. But let me talk to the council about it and see, because you're not gonna see it until April seventeenth anyway.
Right.
So, we can kinda do it.
We have two meetings.
Yeah, yeah, two meetings, so, but, yeah, so, I'm hoping that they'll be able to see a draft, um.
The fifteenth.
There's only a little bit of a chicken name drop going on, because they really can't approve anything until they know what it's gonna cost from the fact it's gonna have on the budget, so they can prioritize.
That's, yeah, they can tell us that the, of this ten years worth of things, these, these ones we need to do.
Oh, you see, I get that, but what I'm hoping is that based on the recommendations from me, Brady, and our city engineer, as to what we think we can get done next fiscal year, that's what we'll get approved. Then, because what happens with the CIP, just like everything else, just because we put something in the budget, doesn't mean it gets done.
Right.
We just run out of time, is normally what happens is we run out of time, not money, just time. There are some projects that we just, you guys saw what this went and was like, right? How many projects we have going on? It's been crazy. Do you think we wanna clear ourselves with the city through this next year? There are some projects, some of them are big, Williams is a big one, that's gonna take a couple of years, it's probably just gonna do engineering. So, there'll be some, so what I'll do is I'll see what I can present on April first, and then if the council wants to, if they're happy with it, then consider it adopted. They'll be ready to go with that, and then when you guys see it, we can do the official adoption on the fifteenth, if that's what the council wants. And then you'll have the adopted one on the seventeenth.
Well, I wanted to make it clear that, that, as a question, if they adopt or adopt or approve the CIP, do we fund, or are they expecting to fund everything that's approved, or we just fund until we run out?
They're gonna fund based on the recommendations that we give them.
Okay, so.
We know what we'll be able to do.
Those five projects going to do, we can say we don't want more for it, we'll take the top four. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Since this is the first time the city's had one, and this is a, going to be a bit of a, a learning curve for everybody on what we do with one and how one's handled. Now, maybe that my experience has been going to places I've been, they've always had them, so normally they just get updated and numbers punched in and they get adopted, but.
And then back to the CIP is what it does with all the sheets that it's.
Yeah, but, and this, uh, the budget committee's role is they get, they present it to them, but they don't move on it, they don't act on it, they just.
If the council could just provide priorities, and say this is one, two, three, four, five, that would be the thing that we could.
We'll get priorities, so.
Yeah.
I, I think there's more, there's gonna be more discussion regarding urban renewal agency priorities, and then we'll be. Yeah, so that's gonna be, but those are good points, I'll make sure that we have a draft on that one. Um, so that's what will happen on April seventeenth. Give or take, whoever you, you need support. May fifteenth, uh, we'll do it, you, this is when on both budgets, you'll get the budget message, you'll get the draft budget, um, we'll take public comment on the proposed budget meeting, you'll hold it as a hearing. So if anybody wants to come to speak, they can speak. And then this is when you ask questions, deliberate, revise, whatever. So, before, so actually I was wrong, you won't have the actual draft budget. Probably, I'm probably gonna give it to you somewhere around April seventeenth. Because you're not actually gonna do anything with it till May fifteenth, I wanna try to give you at least two weeks to review it. So that's my goal. So, since you're gonna see it the first time, May fifteenth, two weeks before that, I want you to get it. I'm really trying to get it done sooner, because I'll give you guys plenty of time to digest it, and ask new questions and help me switch things around in my detail, so. And then on June third is the, uh, city council you are meeting, where they take, they also have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Um, they also have the proposed use of state revenue sharing, it has to happen twice, per, per state goal. And then, they would motion to approve the state revenue sharing for excess purposes, adopting of money, and mega appropriations. So, budget must be adopted by June thirtieth, the council can make changes to what you've approved, um, but it's no more than ten percent of what you approved, so if the overall amount that they wanna change increases the budget by ten percent, I guess who gets to see it again? And hopefully that won't happen, because we'll start, well, other processes all over again. Okay, I will talk quickly about budget layers and funds. So, the way the budget works, so if you have the budget in front of you, the draft I gave you, um, if you take a look at, look at, um, page, I need page, starting at page six, at the bottom it says six of thirty-three, it's the general fund. Oh, it's page of six of this. Has general fund administration, program expenditures. So the way, the way the budget works, is there, you have these budget layers, so overall you have the budget, but this is right here. Oh, really? So within the budget are all these funds, and we'll talk about some of the funds that we go through, funds like streets, water, wastewater. They give them as separate buckets, within the bigger bucket of the budget. Then within those buckets, of the fund buckets, you have all these things that we call programs. These will be own personnel, materials and services. I don't wanna muddy the water by telling you what these categories were, but just think of this as each of these funds, and then these are your programs, and they need individual things underneath them, or call them items. So you have programs, money items, over the fund, over the budget. So that's how, when I talk about, one of the things I think it's important to do, if you look at, it's hard to see on page six, but if you look under materials and services, right below personal services, you see advertising, property casualty, life loss insurance. Do you see, is it blue underneath it, do you see that faint blue? Okay. These, these things that are actually showing here under materials and services are general programs that all budgets have. They have materials and services underneath, and they have all these different buckets, if you will, of funding. What I try to do is tell you, in these individual buckets, what's in there. So when you say, what's under city hall building, what, yeah, I mean, that's just a general term, right? That could be anything. But what I mean is it's our janitorial, it's miscellaneous, and that is just catch-all. Uh, basement organization, records management, basement purge, you know? Could, what it does is shows miscellaneous would also include maintenance, and I think I'm gonna update it this time, we include maintenance, because we'd be using city hall this bucket for maintenance, so. Contracted services, these are all the ones where we have agreements with. Arrow heating, um, our system costs for our, our building system, co-hosting updates, and these are all the things that we negotiate with, if you will. Um, and the same thing, so my idea of this, this is when we start talking about the blue, and when we get to the projects, what we're saying is, okay, well, if we approve, you go to page, probably the best way to do that is, um, under capital outlet page, but not on page eight. You see facilities improvement? So underneath that, this year, I've tried to get the technology, audio services, security upgrade, all these buckets. They need all get done, they're not all gonna get done. Some of these we will want to push into next year, but these were things we're trying to get done. Does that mean we went and spent that twenty-five thousand dollars that we allocated to audio visual? No, no, we didn't spend that. Um, it just needs to be spent, so there will be money left over in capital. Um, we can do some of the, we're doing the upgraded council chamber line, we're supposed to have that done, that's supposed to get done, and some of these other things we are doing. Um, upgrading the administration office will be a project you'll see going on, because we're spreading it out over a few years. So, but that's when we talk about what these are, viewed as a collection, so a fund is a program elements, program elements are line items, the detailed expenses.
Question.
Yeah?
The, the general fund sometimes will cover things like the real cell installation, that's gonna tell revenue stores, does that revenue by fund as well?
Yes, so, uh, I think I gave that to you, I think that's page, I think real start on page three, yes, look at page three. First page of the budget I gave you. At the top, it says general fund resources. So, this isn't the individual breakdown of that U S M. No, it is, look on page, look on page, page four. So under the general fund, this is the resources, so you can see we're up, and we are gonna talk back on this, so let me give you a normal little bit, then we'll get back to that, I hope we're onto that. So, revenues and expenditures we track in separate accounts. All of our funds have a revenue source, how we ask to receive, whether it's two sixties or whatever, and they have their expenses. Each fund is dedicated to specific program, an area of work, streets, custom building, sound enhancement, water sewer, that sort of stuff. Revenue assigned to one fund cannot be used for expenditures of other. Okay, so if we say, you know, general fund's got all this money, and streets, red, you know, we need, we need more money. Unless we do an actual transfer, which is allowed as long as it's been budgeted, we can't simply say, well, let's just take it out of there. You know, there has to be the actual physical transfer of it, and we cannot take money out of water and sewer um, to, to fund the general fund, you know, but we have a street project that we need to, we can't just warrant sure funding.
But the grant for that, what it'll, it can only be used for that, it can't be used for anything else in the general fund either.
The grant for that came out of general fund, out of our contracted services.
Okay.
What, let me rephrase that, that's gonna be part of the supplemental, why I have to do to include that grant fund. That will be in, in the.
Um, well, I guess I'm asking, is it real clear in here that, that if a particular revenue source is designed for a particular project, and restricted to that, within a fund?
Within a fund, right, right, right. And that's only grants though. Unless we spend them, grants only received, are you gonna try to clarify, maybe I'm not understanding, okay?
So, in this particular case, this grant, there is no fund specifically defined for that grant? So it goes into the general fund? What I think the question is, is the grant specifically requires a restricted use. So how are those funds in the general fund identified as restricted use funds so that the money that is, let's say it's a million dollars, that is restricted use, and this is the same for the sheriff's fund. It's in the, it's in the transit lodging fund, but it is a restricted use?
Correct.
And can only be used for that?
Right.
How are those identified in the budget?
There, because we don't have that grant, we didn't have that grant, it was, was not contemplated in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, so I have to do a supplemental to say, I do a grant, uh, under.
Are there other examples, uh, kind of thing in here that we could look at?
Uh.
I mean, I, as long as they know how it's designated, it doesn't matter.
Let me see, let me, let me think here, give me, give me a second here, I'm gonna have to be in the general fund, give me a second here.
No, it probably wouldn't be, it probably would like street.
Yeah, so let me give you an example, go to page, um, let's not identify, the orange one, streets.
The page just.
It's not, there's no page number on the bottom. Looks like this, it's orange. Next street is at the top.
Street is the top?
Yep, you got it.
Materials and services?
Yep. Well, no, flip on page, go to the shorter page, one more.
Shorter.
On the other side of, on the other side of that one.
Well, it's page sixteen, because one, one on the other side's fifteen, so.
Yeah, um, you got it right there, uh, that's it, right at the section, at the top, it should say street program resources. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
Okay, so, look at grants. It's the, uh, under the top one, it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, what, seven down?
Right.
Under Rosa Street, see that, two forty-eight, one hundred? That was our Bay Street Improvement Project grant, we got from ODOT. Okay, now, if you slip to, if you go into, you find capital outlet. And under improvements, you see Bay Street to Highway one-on-one. Um, under token materials and services, capital outlet improvements, overlays, curbs, ramps, highway one-on-one. Bay Street to Highway one-on-one. Is everybody there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's, that's how we do it. Now, how we track internally is we assign it, it has its own code, it has its own.
But there's nothing in here to say, to tell us that, that grant money can't be used for anything, you know, it's just part of the budget.
It's not part of the budget, I won't make a touch of it for anything else.
Good.
Well, it's, in this case, it was part of the bucket for streets.
Right.
It came into the, it came into streets, it hit the, it hit the street program as a grant for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. It doesn't say here that the money came in and it was specifically to be used for the Bay Street project. There's no way in the budget today to be able to see that.
And there's no way to actually do that, where we do that is in the, um, the budget messages, the descriptions, and the capital improvement program, right?
And you probably put it in the line item pile, but.
Now, one of the things I've been contemplating doing, and that, that might be something that kind of does that, maybe I'll kick this off this year, is what we can do is we can set up one of these things called program codes, in, you know, software system. So we can say, this money comes in, and then we bill against it and we'll get it out of that account. But, one of the other things I have is a capital improvement form that I'm tracking expenses against it. So, when engineering has this whole big spreadsheet, so when he does something for me, I track that money that comes out of Bay Street. So when engineering has these whole big spreadsheets, or when he does something for me, I track that money that comes out of the Bay Street project, which really is not well over.
So I, I think the problem, Kim, is that, you know, when we see a grant line for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars? And then we end up seeing an expense line for three hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
The two don't match each other, and so the question then, this Bay Street one-on-one, highway to one-on-one is a three hundred thousand dollar line item. We don't know by looking at this, that that three hundred thousand dollar line item was paid for two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for, for, out of the grant?
Okay.
So it's, it's hard for us to, and this, this was the, the same challenge I had last year. It's hard to know if there are allocated dollar amounts that have to be spent for something specific. I just don't know where to see, because they're allocated.
Two kinds of grants, there's grants for a specific project, and there's grants for a fund, and, and.
No, no, there's only grants for specific things. You don't ever get general money, do whatever you want with it. So, that's how we do it, but I think maybe, maybe what could help? Um, right, we're gonna be able to talk about previous things, do notes. I can put notes at the bottom and say, this grant money is for the, the Bay Street. I can actually create something for each, um, fund, if you will, which would be part of the budget that says we anticipate twenty-one hundred from our grant we received, we plan to spend this money on Bay Street Prova Project. So, any of one of those work?
You could put the, you could put the grant, in the grant line, you could put the name of the project.
I could do that too.
Yeah.
That would be very helpful, but.
Would that help you?
So the, the other example that I have, which is an example I come back to all the time.
Mm-hmm.
Is the, the money for, for a law enforcement.
Yes, and I really need to sit down and talk to you about that.
The transit lodging tax specifically was called out by ordinance to have a percentage that goes to security or, or public safety.
Right.
And, I don't think we as a city know, anywhere that I can see, how much money is sitting in that account, and it's gotta be well over a million dollars.
Well, that was, we'll talk about that offline on TRT because it does show where that money is, it is just sitting in TRT essentially. It's never been transferred.
Right, so it's an allocated fund, I mean, it, it technically is allocated only to that specific purpose. And so, there's nowhere for us to see that, and what I'm afraid happens is that it gets caught up in, oh, well, we've got all this money sitting in T L T. The reality is, is we don't, because a million dollars of it belongs to public safety.
That is going to take some, try and figure that out, because that is in this, TRT is in this.
And the other thing to do is what, what are public safety?
Well, that's, that's a council thing that they have to work through, but for, for us, it's a restricted amount of money that can't be used for other things. It makes sure I know that we can't use it for.
Well, and you should, okay, so I just wanna remind people of something, city council, just because they make a rule, doesn't necessarily, it doesn't bind current councils, our current council could change that, could say, you know what, just just use our seventy percent that we get. A lot of this is gonna depend on what happens at the legislature right now too. Um, I don't know what that's gonna look like, so, but I do want, by, by the time you guys get it, I will have met with Bill because there is some tricky situation, we need to move money, we need to move money right now. Need that, we need to move money out of the, the appropriate money goes into the general fund like it's supposed to. Because there's a lot more money that belongs to the general fund that's currently sitting in TRT right now. So, because no transfers are ever made, but that's a different story, and that's something we need to get a hold of this year. I've already had some transfers done based on, we know that out of the estimate, we would be getting this particular bucket to seven percent. But that's a whole different creature, so. But I could actually make that change if that will help clarify, you know, the grant.
It would, it would be very helpful.
That would be good, so, you're okay with me putting as a line item underneath it? And then maybe with an explanation on the budget message, because I can do that.
That, there's another way to look at those reserve funds, and that is as a funding source, for instance, projects when people are superior. In other words, it just sits there until it's needed, and then we transfer it in for a specific project, like we would a grant.
And that's a lot of what reserves are, but reserves are really, you'd rather do that with contingencies than with reserves. Reserves, what you, especially if you're in the middle of a budget to, to move money out of reserves requires almost an act of Congress, and I don't mean, I mean, it requires a lot of processing.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that, that, that money is, that it's collected for a specific purpose that is sitting in an account, reserve, you know, also reserve account technically, but if it's being, if we're proposing projects that, that qualify for that money, then, then we can transfer it in as a, as a revenue source to that project at the time.
Sure, because there are some restrictions already there, especially water and sewer.
Right, well, right, that, that's a limit to what the fund's gonna be used for.
And honestly, do we?
So I know, it would have to be a public safety project, whatever that is.
And if we think that we have.
Or whatever, however the council, the current council wants to define what that is.
Of course, it's.
Yeah, so right now, under the administration budget, we have three hundred operating contingency, and that's supposed to just for emergencies. And we're not gonna get, I don't have anywhere near touching, but we also have two hundred seventy-seven, one thirty-two in reserves. Do we know what we would use that money for right now? We don't really currently have any capital projects right now. But maybe at some point, we wanna seismically outfit our, uh, city hall, and so it'd require hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe we wanna touch that. But, that's not a lot in there, so we will need to look at building up reserves and things like that. Your contingency would be a good place to tap into some of these funds, that's why there's so much in there. There's also a two hundred, three hundred, two hundred, unappropriated, that means we just don't have anything for that right now, so. We've got operating, we've got reserves, and we got a lot, we got that money in unappropriated, so. There's money for any kind of, you wouldn't necessarily go ahead and give to allocate, you could do that ahead of time without worrying about where do you hit your contingencies or who's reserves, so. We'll talk more about that when we get into the budget aspect of it. Um, so here's what we talk about, the budget layer of funds. Funds are, there are restricted funds, and by that means they can only be used for what their purpose was. Harbor funds, so the harbor is restricted, we don't pull money out of harbor. Money in harbor, but we don't pull money out of harbor. The harbor's supposed to be funded through those user fees and all that other stuff. Same thing with water, wastewater, S P Cs are funded through construction, and debt services are restricted, so we can't, you know, can't float money around in there. Discretionary, that means we get the option to use money for how we wish, I mean, we still have to follow the bucket rule if it's in the street bucket. General, parks and building, sound enhancement, streets. Uh, I did include Morocco, I, they're kind of restricted, so Addy Beach, you know, the beach closer, and the Morocco, those are basically restricted funds. You know, they're, I just, they're small funds, and there's usually much on in them, so those aren't included, but that's what that. Reserves are generally set aside for capital improvement projects, that's the reason. Um, budget funds, the general fund is our day-to-day, we work really a lot out of our general fund. No restrictions on how our resos- resources are used, so whatever we think we need in our general fund, we can use the resources for. Our resources are our permanent rates, interest, fees and charges, grants, and miscellaneous. And I'm trying to figure out how miscellaneous got so big this year, so I need to find out, reading my review, I'm like, how miscellaneous gets so big? Miscellaneous is really supposed to only be a small bucket for things. Um, but it just, a lot of times.
It is true that the other funds, though, transfer to the general fund for payment.
Right, and you know what, you're right, I did not put in there, I should've put that, we also get transfers from the other funds. We, we take personnel, instead of allocating a piece to it, and it's a lot of time to allocate this, we pay it all out of the general fund, but a portion of it, based on how much we think they're working together, does get transferred to.
So if that transfers, we transfer N and L?
Hmm?
We transfer N and L?
We can, we do, it's also a specialty. Mm-hmm, yeah, so we get, so trans, so the resources can also come from transfers in from other funds. Our general fund is the one now. So I wanted to show you, this isn't a hundred percent, but this is the general idea of what our revenue, where we get our money from. I don't think you're right, I did not put transfers on here, um. Not a big bucket, but it is a bucket, and I can figure that out, I plan to present this as part of the budget presentation in, uh, May. But, do you see the purple? You know who that is? Ask T L T.
The, the blue numbers, the blues numbers surprise us a little. That's, that's like Spectrum and Astound and, uh.
The French.
Power.
Power, Central Lincoln.
Mm-hmm. Get a lot of money from them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
We get a lot of money from them, we pay them a lot, but we get a lot of money from them. I'll reach you up, I'm gonna add the transfers and I'll get a, a, a more, that's, that's a real quick snapshot of what it looks like in our general fund. That money that we're getting to pay for office is coming from T L T? And that's something I need everybody to pay attention to when we talk about, um, funding and, and all these revenue sources and stuff like that.
That's a small percentage of TRT, right?
But it's actually, it's seven percent, eight percent, seven, yeah.
Seven?
Yeah, it's about one.
It's twelve, but.
Twelve, right.
Seven go to the general fund, but then seventy-thirty split on the other percent, I mean, there's, there's a lot involved with getting that.
There is, it's paying for stupid things.
So that's not.
I really don't want them to change things.
It's getting close to the revenue collecting that category, it's just.
Oh, no, um, well, it's a big chunk of it, let me see here, uh, transferred, so from the, what I estimated, I estimated about one point eight million that we were gonna get in revenue. Um, it was less than what we would've gotten in, what we adopted in twenty-two thousand. Uh, I'm not sure we're gonna get it. I, I mean, I am in numbers recently, and I don't know we're gonna get one point eight, but assuming we got one point eight, the percentage we get to transfer and take right off the top is one point two six though. So, that's a big, big chunk that gets to come right out.
Now, the other parts of that seventy-thirty split part, that goes into the general fund as well, as it's used for specific projects.
Right, I don't move it into the general fund, I have it here under city services. And I take, I, when I have city services that I think touch tourism, I take out of there. But I try to keep along the focus of it, it impacts tourism, or tourism impacts it. Uh, I'm trying to be real respectful of that seventy-thirty percent of what that looks like, because I think tourism is important, no matter if it drives us crazy. Uh, and good luck. So, special funds, special revenue, these are the ones that are set up to serve a specific purpose. Um, debt service, uh, you guys know about debt service, enterprise, these are like what we call the harbor wastewater. They're restricted funds, they're treated like businesses, they, they're on their own, they're supposed to be on their own. We don't transfer money to water and wastewater. We do transfer money, a little bit, to cover, uh, payroll and some, um, general administration expenses to the general fund. But otherwise, the water, wastewater, and, to some extent, it's supposed to be harbor, act over there, they're like little mini businesses. What's in a fund, um, resources, that's our revenue, beginning fund balance, estimate revenue requirements, that's our expenditures, our operating contingency and reserves. The unappropriated acts like it carries over to the next year's budget to recover requirements prior to resources being available, so. It just transfers over, you can pull out the unappropriated when you do any budget, but it just, money just transfers over, so. It changes every time because you don't always need it. I try not to, I really try to allocate what we can, um, to get projects done, but we, we can, I like, I'd rather be in unappropriate, I'd rather see it, see a reserves and see it in unappropriated. So, because to me, it's like, well, that doesn't mean go anywhere. Um, I'll let you, I didn't wanna really keep you guys too long, so I'll let you just start this, but this really just breaks down. Um, you can see where, uh, personal services, materials and services, capital, capital outlet are usually allocated, which means they have a place, they serve a purpose. Special payments, debt service, the transfers out are not allocated simply from the standpoint, um, these are things that you generally, transferred out are just designed for a specific purpose to go pay for something in another budget. And the rest of them are not, they're just generally not touched unless you need to, but then you have to jump through a lot of hoops, depending on which one you're gonna do. Um, so what happens to reserves in ending fund balance, they become the next year's beginning fund balance for that specific fund, so they just kind of roll up into it. What happens to unspent budget at the end of the year, everybody keeps asking me this, what happens to unspent budget? Just as a reserve in end funding, but actually, just, it just goes in the next year, so, um. You don't, doesn't, it, a lot of people I think think it, you know, use it or lose it type situation, but that's not the way that works. Um, what about multi-year projects or the five-year C I P programs? So what they will do is each multi-year item is re-appropriated, so you're gonna have every council every year, even if we for budget annually, we'll have to keep less than it.
Can, can you explain to me the second question here? Um, if, if we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars and we only spent eighty, are you saying that twenty thousand dollars of that will roll into the new budget? And then, we have a new budget that we're allocating against that twenty thousand?
It goes into the beginning fund, beginning fund balance, it's part of the beginning fund balance, because it hasn't been spent.
It really doesn't. What goes in is excess of revenue versus expense.
Are we talking revenue here or are we talking expenses?
Expenses.
It's, it's not authorized to be used in the following year for the same purposes, it hasn't been allocated.
Right, that's, right, that's why, I actually, I'm getting that wrong, they, they say that should actually go into a reserve fund, into a budget.
So that's basically just excess in revenue that we didn't spend, so it, it goes in on the balance sheet as a reserve fund balance?
Right.
Or beginning balance of a fund, whatever that is.
It's excess revenue, it's not excess.
If it's not allocated, it's an expense, it's not budgeted.
It's excess revenue.
It's excess revenue.
Yeah, yeah, so once it goes in there, do we know where it came from, or does it matter? It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, we have a beginning balance, it's still restricted based on the fund, but.
Right.
It just doesn't have a purpose, thank you.
You said it was restricted under funds, but what, you said?
Well, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a budgetary purpose, in other words, it's not allocated to spend, you have to do that in the new budget.
Okay, oh, that's.
It's just a source of buck, I have one.
Why is there always unspent budget? Because we can't only anticipate what needs to be done, so, you know, we, we do our best guesses of what we think we might accomplish in the year, but we can't all anticipate what that looks like. Um, and then transfers, I've, we kind of talked about is, there's transfers in here that you'll see, and a lot of them are simply to pay the payroll and the general, uh, office administration expenses. Um, harbor, that's something we, I need to talk about, that'll be more like a council decision, because generally, we transfer anywhere between fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to the budget, but where that comes out of is something that I think that we need to, I'm gonna take a harder look at that this year, because generally, it could be flagged from anywhere.
So let me ask you this, harbor and water, for payroll?
Mm-hmm.
Do they transfer money to the general fund to pay for payroll, or is it billed directly?
No, they transfer money to the general fund.
Okay, so they, they, they're billed for the hours, basically.
Yeah, when you, when you, uh, you reviewed this, I, I'll waste your time on that, but I'm gonna wanna show it to you, you'll get a sticker sheet that shows the transfers. And most of them are for payroll and general administration, like instead of having my team split, uh, power bill, five, fifteen hundred, they are to split it like seventeen different ways, but instead of splitting it twenty different ways, you might say, okay, put it all in general fund, and you know that this certain percentage comes out of water, or comes out of water, comes out of store, so. Um, we don't do that a lot with the administration stuff, because it is such a best to track, if you showed us spreadsheet on how we split up the funds for the T U D, you will see about that, so, I try to do the little small things and say, don't split a twenty-dollar bill five ways. You know, that's just a waste of time, so, those are back in here, and if I, if it, if it will help, I can break those line down a little bit more so you can see what actually comes in there. You see the payroll, but you don't see the administration.
Okay.
But I can break that down as well, okay, we kind of talked about it, so the first two columns are actual revenues. So what I want you to look like, when you're looking at actual, um, when you, the new budget, when it says actual in top, what I've done is I've gone in, I ran a end of year report, so those numbers that are actually in there are actually, normally what it is, is it's audit. You know what I mean, it's audit, but these are not, you're, but you're seeing the two numbers that we spent in these categories this year. Um, just so you know, in the new budget last year, the group asked for me to put what we spent in our current budget this year, year-to-date, I've done that. So, you'll have to, you'll see that as well. Um, so the current budget revenue columns, proposed budget, I think you probably know this, propose is, is what I'm saying, this is what I wanna do. You guys do the approve part, so once you, and it could change between a propose and approve, it could change between approve and adopt it. So, I do propose, you guys approve, and it gets adopted. Um, so we talked about funding accounting, I think we kind of covered that, so, um, I think we're okay on that. I talked about all of the elements of the budget document, where city, where revenue comes from, okay? This is all the places that we get revenue from, this does include the transfers in, and some loans, we do not do it in front of loans. Um, resources, so when people are considering, this is kind of putting there just sort of a thought, is we're, you're considering increasing revenue, or we got where, how it works, this is the types of things that people need to be thinking about. Is how effective, efficient is a revenue collection, uh, are unfair burdens placed from the. Is how effective efficient is the revenue collection, uh, are unfair burdens placed for those who give me support, can people reduce consumption to avoid the burden or cross cover, how do you sell the new residents revenue? I just kind of put that in there because we've had a lot of conversations about revenue lately. Um, we've already talked about that, so we're almost done, best practices. Uh, we're gonna review the budget, request information from staff during the committee process, provide notice to informed citizens when and ooh, I think I cut it off, I think all my schedule that I cooked a notice that the two of this since we looked at notice had been published like before, so next Friday will be the first notice, so please ask, encourage your folks to attend. Invite public comments, be honest, listen, focus on the best uses of funds for the community of people that. Uh, I'm asking you not to act independently outside of committee council agency meeting, so, uh, you can, I mean, one-on-one conversations, but just be aware of anything that might lead to decision where you have form, and how do we support, you said, hey. So hey, if you get together, don't decide anything.
Which is why Kim does not like us to respond, reply all on an email.
Yeah, please do not reply.
If you reply all on an email and it, the email that Kim sent went to everybody, we've now established a forum and any comments back and forth
Mm-hmm.
consider are considered um public.
And the organ of the meetings law is really cracking down on what they call serial communications.
Hmm.
And even including staff, maybe we should include staff, now include staff.
Say that again, what was that?
Serial communications, serial, yeah, so like say you email Autumn, okay, you're fine, you guys are in forum.
Serial.
But then say Autumn emails Scott.
Oh, yeah.
And then so or so, now let's say you put me into the mix.
Well, we're good, because I'm running conditions, re-form.
Oh, yeah.
So if I talk to the planner, he talks to one of the other people about the same topic, do just stuff, or?
Well, you you didn't establish a forum, but you did dive into the serial communication.
Yeah, we are now subject to public meeting law.
Because, yeah, so and and that's a change, that's new, that just.
Well, that's scary.
Yeah, it is scary, but um when we talk about this, let's just ask questions, let's not make decisions, so feel free to leave me on with lots of questions. Uh, I'm not gonna hide any bad news, um, and I'm not gonna play you games, that's not the way that I go, I'm gonna be honest. And then I just want to talk about public public comment, we should talk during our first meeting about how we wanna do that. You know, the rule is five minutes, but you don't have to do, you guys can allow more, I'm assuming we're gonna have public comment, I don't know. Um, but just make sure that when we talk about that, we we make sure we give plenty of time for people to talk and that that no edit done. And that is it, sorry, that took longer than I thought it is, it is, um, I think that you guys are have a lot of questions and I encourage you to come in and meet you individually, especially you two, um.
Yeah.
Is there only one debt service?
Thank you.
We only have the bond, but for the water, great.
Wow, so, so we're.
I thought it's the water.
No, the water, you're right, water.
Okay.
We just got water. Well, wait, remember your phrase that, I think we're still paying a portion of this tour, but Blaine's piece is done, I'll have to look at that and see what's going on. So, yeah, Blaine needs to pay.
So I have a concern about communicating to the folks that we have these meetings, is there any chance we should consider a direct mail or to all of the D U R residents? We're just, people, there isn't any newspaper anymore for the most part. Well, if you're watching Facebook, not everybody goes to the post office and not everybody goes online.
No, where I'm gonna publish it, I have to legally publish it, I have to legally publish it, I have to publish it in the local year and Yawas.
Where?
You know, Yawas, you're gonna make the report.
People don't read those papers.
This is where also don't do, people don't do newspapers anymore, and so this is where we need a reader board.
They don't do it, no.
Can you also?
Or.
Again, out here that has a sign that says, you know, we're having a budget management issue or we're having a council meeting.
I want a reader board. I also want a local one so we can tell people what's going on in college.
Or or send it to the auditor, do we send mass and they'll put it on the community calendar?
Posters on one more would feel good.
Raise it.
Will that help?
One of the post offices has been the one.
I should just dial it out.
I don't know.
Listen, we do have a problem with that, we can't send them out or out for every communication.
It is.
I recall.
No, no.
But here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna do, we talked about this today and the whole con situation, everybody got noticed.
Right.
Here's what we're gonna do, we decided, so Everbridge, I someone I talked with about Everbridge, Everbridge is our live digital communication newsletter, if you will. What I'm gonna do is we have, I've already set the decode that I'm going to do a mailer throughout to everybody. I'm gonna give them the information on Everbridge and say, if you wanna know what's going on, keep a rise of debt, and if you wanna get notifications about things, sign up for Everbridge. That way I can push out on the street and hold them close.
That's perfect, that's perfect.
So that's notice last night.
Sign up for what?
Everbridge, Everbridge, it's.
Everbridge. I've seen, I had it for a while, went to the.
Um, you know, we still have an account and we had probably asked my book yet, we had forty some people sign up for, but I don't know if they're active. So I haven't tested it, but I could use that, I should have thought about that.
Yeah, it could be that, good that, the water dropped last night, I looked at the.
Yeah, I want to talk to you about little logo.
The city also does mailers for utility bills, and so that little card, the little card that gets sent out though,
But it's supposed to be hard.
I mean, you could put a two-line notice or a three-line notice on something.
Well, that's great, sign up Everbridge, you could put something like that on there.
On the bottom of the utility bill, because every citizen gets that.
Yeah, but you're not gonna see it. Yeah, and if it's if it's around the time, if we're gonna do around the time we have something going on, we do like to use the bill. Not everybody watches it though, but we do like to.
My little issue with the notice that didn't have the end time. How long?
You have a lot of agree, agree.
Uh, well, okay, you're supposed to move four to six hours on that.
Oh, well, it 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 was off when I went to at at eleven thirty and it was on by twelve thirty, so that was a problem, I just didn't know when it was coming.
Who put it on? Oh, yeah, same, yeah, we are definitely gonna use Everbridge, get people signed up for that, we put it on the website, we did the best we can, but it's hard to keep everybody in.
Oh, and the link, the link that was in the.
In emergency, not emergency, wasn't even an emergency, but.
They were they were working outside of my house till one o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, right, I don't know, I don't know. Yes, it's a lot of noise.
You can't hold people's hands, you can't direct them to a meeting, they have to have some responsibility. When I was on council as as mayor, this came up constantly, so everybody wanted to come up with a new program on how to inform the public. You know, whether it be the post office.
Anytime, not tomorrow, yeah, cuz I'm also.
Or whether we are signing out front, they're still gonna. Communications that we're seeing, we do it seven times in seven different ways to reach most people, so seven different channels, how do we have seven channels?
I don't have a person, a staff member that can be talking on that kind of session, it's primarily.
Yeah. I mean. I just had a couple of issues with the specific notices we sent last night on the web, cuz I went to the website, so it was there, I found it easily.
I did.
There was an error in the link and it didn't have the end time.
It did say.
It said seven, it was said seven eight, but that looked like a start time, it didn't.
They were supposed to update that.
It started at nine.
Well, my god said it was gonna start on seven and that was gonna go for six days.
Sort of nine, four, three, four, oh. Yeah, it started at nine and it went for.
That was the notice that we sent out, but then they changed it on the back side, so I pushed it out to what I pushed out to all the H O As, but it was, when did I find out? I found out at six forty-five that they were pushing it to nine o'clock, there was no way we were gonna.
Yeah, no, the way you're gonna get to the H O A is that like, because our staff didn't.
Well, the problem is that I think I sent I sent it to eight and Brady, but I think I sent it to one person.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and we knew it was happening at nine o'clock, but we for some reason saw a notice that said it was gonna be two to three hours and it was much longer than two to three hours and our guests were calling.
Yeah, it was like two and a half, good before.
Yeah, Brady told me four to six hours, so I put that on my notice.
Oh, it, I thought I thought it was two hours, you were telling everybody it was gonna be nine to eleven?
That obviously.
Yeah, it was before, it was right there.
And here we're getting, we started getting calls at eleven thirty, eleven forty-five
They told you to drive to the line.
And and so it, I mean, it wasn't that big of a deal until the call started and we told everybody, we sent up notices to all of our guests and we said, make sure you run the water because it's gonna be rusty and.
Yeah, it was.
Hey, um, before we talk, if you don't have any more budget stuff, do you wanna end me?
Ours was. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, we we should have made it, it's a long time ago.
Yeah. I'll be able to end six, three, four.
All right, thank you, yeah, thank you. Um, I fully agree that we need to do something about communication.